Pause meeting in order, all rights for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
There was three additions to the agenda, which would be six F, RDB tree removal, seven A, west central sanitation contract, and then on the new business, A, funding for Sauk River Park campground. Can I get a motion to approve?
Oh, second.
Home favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion is carried. Open forum, anybody would like to say anything?
Nobody? I got some. So as a parent of an eighth grade student at the high school, I got an email yesterday about a student survey that is optional, but if I want my kid to opt out of it, I have to fill out a form and submit it to the school. So anyways, it kind of tweaked my interest, I just wanted to see what the survey was. So I went in and I started looking at the survey questions, it's like 100 questions. Get to number nine, it says, "What was your sex assigned at birth as on your original birth certificate?" Number 10 is, "What is your gender identity?", plus 12 options. Number 11, "Has a person's appearance style, dress, or way, or the way they walk or talk may affect how people describe them? How do you think other people at school would describe you? Very, mostly feminine, somewhat feminine, equally feminine or masculine, somewhat masculine, very, or mostly masculine." Number 12, "How do you describe your sexual orientation? Straight, asexual, bisexual, gay, or lesbian?", questioning, not sure, pansexual, queer. I don't describe myself in any of these ways, I'm not sure what this question means, are the options? Keep in mind, this is for eighth grade students. Now, in my mind, I think that should be, I shouldn't have to fill out a form and send it to school and say, I don't want my child taking that survey. I think it's a little extremely uncomfortable for them, number one. I don't think it's the state's business what they're asking. You get to number, you get to, and then there's another level, sorry. 11th grade, there's another higher up level to this survey. And question 107 is, "Have you ever had sex?" 108 is, "During the last 12 months, how many different partners have you had sex with?" 109 is, "Did you drink alcohol or use drugs before you had sex last, the last time?" 110, "Have you talked with your partners about?", and then it's protecting yourselves from STDs, preventing pregnancies. Number 111, "The last time you had sex, did you or your partner use a condom?" 112, "The last time you had sex, what method or?", you get the picture. There's a lot of really disturbing questions on these surveys that are being given to our kids at school. So, I would like, honestly, I sent it to the school board, I asked them, can you see if we can opt out? Because the way I understand this, the school board can just opt out of the survey altogether.
This came through the Minnesota Department of Education, or the Minnesota Department of Health, or?
I don't even, honestly, I haven't figured that out. This just came yesterday, and I'm like, I gotta say something about it because I want parents to be aware of what's going on. Because there's a lot of people that probably might see this come up in their email and say, notice the parents about a passive consent about a survey that we're giving the kids.
But is it, and you maybe don't have the answer, is it your understanding that this was not generated by the local school system?
Not generated by the local school system, no. This is just something that, I think it's a state thing or a federal thing, and I'm not sure. I don't know, but I hope everybody's aware of what this survey is all about, and you should read all the questions because those are probably the, in my mind, the most disturbing questions. But there's a lot more about your experience at home with your parents, do your parents beat each other, do they, you know? Yeah, so anyway, I don't know what the purpose of it is, gather statistics, but this is the second one in a week that I've dug into and requested our child be removed from. So, with all the additional testing that the state does, the standardized testing and everything else, you know, it's 107 questions, it's probably a two hour survey. What's going on? So anyway, I wanted to bring that up, so everybody's aware of it. Any questions?
No. I, I did see something come through today, this afternoon, I was looking at my personal email, I didn't get a chance to dig into it, so thanks for telling me about it.
And some of those questions, I guess in my mind, are probably not appropriate for 13, 14 year olds. The higher grade kids, you know, but especially the young'uns, it kind of sounded like those are probably, some of those questions are inappropriate, or maybe things that are actually over their head, who knows?
Right, they've never been, they're probably looking at it like, wow, you know, what's the purpose of asking them that? Is it to get that thought in their head, well, what is this, so they start exploring this stuff, or what? I don't know. But anyway, when you get the survey consent form, it doesn't say anything about, it says, "High school students are asked about sexual behavior", high school students, but, you know, doesn't say anything about the eighth grade getting asked all these really personal, private, probably between their parents and them, questions, especially without their parents knowing about it. I think it should be opt, you have to, I think you should have to opt into it, not opt out of it. If you want your kids taking that survey, you should have to tell them you want your kids to take it. So anyway, I don't know, I got more thoughts on it, but this is open forum, so I'm not gonna go any further than that.
Well, thank you.
We'll go to the school board, alright.
No, I agree. Alright, we'll move on. Consent agenda approval of minutes, approval of the bills and purchase orders, there's two gambling resolutions. Resolution number 2022-10 and resolution number 2022-11 for St. Mary's. Then there's E to RDB project invoice from Stearns County. There was a couple resolutions for donations, resolution number 2022-12, which is Craig Shifter donated $150 to the Parks and Rec Fund for a tree replacement. Resolution number 2022-13, Freeport Lions, an amount of $10,000 to Melrose Ambulance Department. Resolution number 2022-14, a donation from Tricat Bus, there was quite a few names that donated that. So I want to say thank you to everybody for donating, much appreciated. Okay, I get a motion to approve?
Make a motion to approve.
Can I get a second? Home favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion carried. I see there's something missing here, there's actually a congratulations that was right over here. One of my mentors, or many, many years, decided it's time for him to call it quits for the, for the fire department. And I was just wondering if Tom would maybe say a few words?
Very few, I hope.
Very few. First of all, I don't know if you know those two people that walked in, but, um, some people like to just set off into the sunset and not be recognized. I, I would respect that, but there's a gentleman here that I can't do that to. After 26 years on the fire department, for serving for Melrose, he served as our assistant chief and a training officer. The amount of knowledge that this gentleman's gonna be leaving is, can't be replaced. He's done a lot, he's taught me a lot of things. He's taught me high ropes, rope rescues, he's always wanted to step in and fill in for the training officer position in the event that someone's not around, deescalating situations, scenes, he's done a very good job with that. Prior to coming to Melrose, he served 14 years on the Clarksville Fire Department. He's held training officer position, he's taught at firefighters for the Granite, firefighters at the Granite Falls Technical School, and assisted with the state school for the five years. So, I think the best thing I could say about Bunker is, is the way he takes on the new department's members, and he trains them. I mean, he, if they can make it through Bunker's School of Training, of Hard Knocks, they're golden. I mean, they, they will, barn fires, structure fires, whatever, he gets them into the, to the thick of things, and he makes sure. And the best part is, he explains what he's doing. He will not put someone through a situation without explaining to them why we're doing it. And I think that is a really good, a good job, and part of the mentor. Bunker, you're gonna be Mr. on the Hall. You will definitely be missed. The trucks don't shine by themselves, you put a lot of time and effort into it, and that ladder truck has been his baby, so now we gotta find a new person to take care of that. But with that, I'd like to say, thank you for your 26 years of service, and I do have a little thing for you.
A little thing? Is it in the cooler?
Just, just in the event that you don't, so, we were able to get this done a little, a little quicker, but thank you for your.
Well, I appreciate that, nobody's gonna want that stinky old helmet anyway, after all the time that I was wearing it, so. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. And, I don't, you're big on Facebook, aren't you?
Yeah, real big.
Yeah. Apparently, your wife led us onto something?
Uh-oh.
Was it your birthday this week?
Yesterday.
So, we were able to make you, I was able to get you a little birthday cake.
Oh, nice.
We do have a birthday cake for you, in honor of your birthday, so.
Well, I appreciate it, and thank you very much, Mrs. Wife over there, that's kind of, my personal information on Facebook.
Any words of wisdom for the?
Well, I, I enjoyed it, as you know, as Chief Weasty knows, I enjoyed the time that I was on there, and, um, when you say I kind of took the young'uns under my wing, if nothing else, they, they learned what a serious growl is and a not so serious growl was, but we managed to get through it, and probably the best part of the whole time experience is just, if you have a little bit of knowledge and you can expound it to especially the younger, newer members of the firefighting fraternity, it was always kind of pleasurable to watch them progress through, through the years, as they did, so. That's probably the best thing of it, so. And you've got another thing there you're gonna embarrass me with?
Oh, yeah, of course. By the way, I did get my will refigured out because he told me he was gonna take care of me if I did do this, so I might not live at the end of the night, it hurt me, so. But in my words, Bunker mentored me when I got on the fire department. I guess saying that he would do is, he'd always grab you, because when you're a rookie, you're always in a hurry. He always would grab you and say, "Walk."
Don't run.
And something that always sticks with me, and the other thing that sticks with me is whenever he did defensive training, he'd use me as the dummy, so he'd show everybody where, you know, pressure points were, and it was never very fun. Usually I'd have to go home and cry for a little bit because I was in deep pain, so. I'm not gonna miss that, Bunker, at all.
Can you demonstrate?
No, I don't want, he could show you, he can take anybody down. But, yes, so here's our little thank you for everything that you've done for, for the community and us as friends, and I appreciate it.
Yeah, I appreciate it too, thank you very much. Alright, we can get out of the meeting now?
When we get the cake out, we'll sing a happy birthday.
Hey, there we go.
Alright, reports, Stearns County Attorney, Attorney Report. Thank you for coming here from a long trek from St. Cloud.
Oh, it's not bad, it's not bad, the roads are clear. Congratulations, I remember when you were a cop.
Yeah.
And I don't have any, I don't have any funny cop stories to tell about him, so I won't embarrass him really bad. That's a lot of years of public service, that's awesome. My name is Janelle Kendall, I'm the Stearns County Attorney, and I'm also by contractor city attorney. So here to make the annual report, and if we can all pull up this one, the handout. On the front, we first talk about the people who law enforcement are into who don't go to court. We're required by law to have a diversion program. I can tell you, our diversion numbers went down dramatically when juvenile crime went down dramatically. Or maybe we just don't know about it, but it's not coming in anymore. The schools are generally not sending things to law enforcement, I don't know if Craig is seeing that as much as we are, closer to the metro area, but the schools are handling a lot more things as disciplinary issues immediately in school, which actually for us helps. If it takes months for a kid to get into court to have to deal with something that they've done, that delay can really not be all that effective in helping the kids actually change their behavior. So we're glad to see that the schools are stepping in and dealing with that. But our juvenile numbers went down quite a bit, and those low level offenses that we used to divert didn't even come into my office. So those went down. Now, on the flip side, the adult offenses, as we're gonna talk about, are at a record high. We've never seen anything like it candidly, and that was starting to happen before the pandemic, and then it just kept going up. So we'll look at that a little bit. Our adult diversion numbers are actually up, but actually very few juvenile diversions. So as we look at this page, this is what we do for you as your city attorney. So these are the misdemeanors and gross misdemeanors that your officers deal with, and as you can see, they're, they're pretty similar the last few years. The citations went down a little bit last year, but not a lot, and actually across the county, we generally are seeing everybody's go up. So the fact that yours went down at all is the only thing that's notable there, but obviously not dramatically, you can see what the numbers have been in the past. And then on the next page is where you fit into the larger, the larger scale. That talks about the felonies that come through my office, both adult and juvenile felonies. You just had one juvenile felony come through this last year, but that was a kid who broke a kid's nose in a fight at school. And that came through my office, and that was charged as a felony. The other 20 felonies that you had, out of the total of 21, half of those were drugs, and I can tell you that your folks are doing a good job of picking off the people who are coming through with, in one case, a particular lot of drugs. They do a good job on their traffic stops, they know how to handle the law, they know how to follow the constitution, and they are picking off some drugs there from people who are passing through. Some of these are people who are born and raised and live here, and other people are people that are coming through your community with drugs, and they are finding them in the context of traffic stops commonly, and doing a good job on searching those cars, so we have an opportunity to catch those people. We have one particular frequent flyer, I was just talking to the chief, he is in custody, he didn't make the huge amounts of bail that he's been making, and he'll be going to prison for a long time and out of your community. We've got 20 some files open on one guy who's been living here for a while, so we're working on that. And when you look at the 20 felonies that you have and the gross misdemeanors, then let's switch to this page. Here's what's going on across the county, we went over 1,200 felonies last year, only 20 of them were ours. But the 1,200 that we got were, as you can see down at the bottom, we've had eight murders in Stearns County each of the last two years. We usually had two or three, we have eight, we have a lot. But we tried four of them this last year, our county was, we were able to keep our criminal justice system moving because our jurors kept coming. In some counties, as I talked to my colleagues, they would call people in for jury duty and the jurors wouldn't come. You can, Stearns County never even slowed down coming for jury trials, so we actually tried 39 trials, this year we tried four homicides. And we were able to keep things moving pretty well. As you can see there, the adult criminal numbers are very high, person crimes, weapon crimes almost tripled if you count the gross misdemeanors and the felonies, and these are felons in possession. These are persons who do not legally have the right to carry, but candidly, these are usually in the context of drug stops or some other criminal activity that they're up to, and that's how we're coming across those. But as you can see, those numbers went up dramatically, those are all prison commitments, so those are some pretty serious cases. And our property and drug crime looked like they're going down. There was a time period in the court system during the pandemic that they literally wouldn't set things for hearings. We could file them in the court and they were just gonna sit there. So we very intentionally held those back, so that by the time somebody gets a court notice, they know when their court hearing is, and we literally have a number of settlement weeks that we're, we have planned. We did one in December, we cleared 200 and some cases in a week. So we do expect in Stearns County that we're gonna have the criminal justice system caught up by Memorial Day. Statewide, they're talking about two, three years to get things going, and because we worked with our judges and our public defenders and the cops knew what we were doing, there were a lot of times where they weren't, the jail wasn't available to put them in for everybody. So those cases that weren't going to jail, now that we get them in, we'll be dealing with them, hopefully actually in one hearing. So we've got a plan to deal with the backlog so that we aren't dragging that for a long time. And again, the biggest thing that happens there is, we can have trials. A lot of people don't make decisions on pleading guilty until they know that the jury is there and witnesses are gonna come in and testify, so if you've been called to jury duty, speak to the public who's listening, please come. Because the fact that there's a jury there sometimes is all it takes for them to say, alright, alright, I'm gonna take responsibility for this. And we need you, we have no power without the juries coming to back that up. Also, just a little bit of good news, we've got two big grants. In this time, because we're keeping track, we collect a lot of data in my office, we got a $575,000 grant to extend our human trafficking work. We'll have three full-time investigators on that, they're very, very busy with trafficking across the county, and then they're dealing with people, again, who are coming in from other places. And we also got another, almost $600,000 grant, to have a supervised visitation center for domestic violence families. Where we need to have somebody keeping an eye on what's going on when those families are getting together for visitation, and we actually got a grant to do that as well. So grant writing's going well, but partly it's because we have all this to do, and we know what we need to do, and we're able to get some help from the state and federal government to help us pay for it. Questions?
Is there anything more they're gonna do for multiple, multiple offenses, like assault wise? The question I have is, so, some, I won't even mention names, but somebody I know works in centricare at the ER. They had a problem with a young lady, and they just get dropped off for evaluation at the ER. She gets evaluated, is gonna get discharged, she has already six assaults, or seven assaults, whatever it was on her record, and she attacks the nurse that's in there. Now, she's basically, I mean, she gets a felony slap on the wrist really to her because she's already got all these, and since then has done it three more times. Not in the ER, but I mean, just in general, has had three more assault things on her. I mean, is, is there more that needs to be done, more than just the, I mean, like I said, you can give a person that felony, but at that point, they're not really caring about it?
Well, that's it, we don't find that the penalties necessarily deter them, we just gotta get people like that out of circulation. And once she's got a felony, if she had enough priors that it was a felony, all the ones after that should be a felony. Is she getting charged though, are the cops getting called?
I believe so, I mean, it's, it's showing up in her records because she's been keeping track of it and stuff like that, but like, I mean, even this person pressed charges and all that stuff, and it really didn't go anywhere.
Each one is gonna get, yeah, the consequences are gonna get bigger, and those kind of cases should have been moving through the system. We kept assault cases moving, all domestics sit in jail until they talk to a judge. So, this was not a domestic, so it wouldn't get that path, which is then three times as fast. But if you wanna toss me your name, I can certainly take a look at it, see what we've got, and I can, yeah.
Alright.
She's got my email, yeah, please send me the name, and I can report back as to at least what we've got in our county, and then look on the state system and see what else she might have in other places too.
Okay.
Public information.
Alright, thank you.
Alright, well, thank you so much for coming, I appreciate it.
Good evening. For January 2022 numbers on our traffic area, we had 14 citations, 40, 50 verbal warnings, 14 written warnings, vast majority of those were parking related. For this year, we've had 299 calls and requests for service, last year was 345, so we're down about 56 calls already in this early part of the year. Our life kind of depends on the weather, so as cold as January was, it meant that nobody wanted to go anywhere besides go to work, even the grocery store and get home. So, keeps our call volume down, but also then keeps our numbers down, so. We don't want them to increase, but we'd like them to be at a steady level so we can keep our officers busy enough to stay awake at night and be entertained, so. 21 agency assists, pretty consistent for us. One area I'd like to bring up to the public, on March 1st, at the public school in the media center, we're gonna be doing a presentation related to common scams. It's through the Melrose Community Ed Program, so you'll need to go online to register for that. I believe they're strictly online, but food shelf donation item is requested, there's no fee for it. There is going to be a sign language interpreter there, we do have some people with hearing impairment that are requesting that, so we have that for anybody else that may or may not need that service. I talked to Stacy Jacobson today, she said we're up to six, so if we can fill up a whole room, fine by me, but otherwise we have a, I think I have a list of about 15 scams that we've seen come through our office, whether they're reported or actual losses, so. Just something to keep people aware of, is what the idea is, so. Any questions?
Thank you, Chief.
Scott?
Just a couple items, I think, you know, I put the big news at the top in my report. We did have a pre-trial hearing on our ongoing nuisance issue out at Rose Park, and it is scheduled for trial, April 21st, 22nd. So, that we're, we'll be preparing for that. The other ones, agreement that I referenced there is really more on the utility side. If you remember, recently you approved some solar panels on one of the apartment buildings, and, you know, when the panels go up, there needs to be a, you know, an agreement with utilities so that, you know, they can get their net metering. And, and so, you know, looked at that, had a few, made a few modifications, so that project is ongoing. And then finally, this would be more for next, your next meeting, we'll be coming up with another proposal to modify the ordinance for licensing with ATVs and the golf carts. I think we brought up, and Chief Mouse reminded me about, currently we've got, you know, people buy a license and it's good for a year. And the idea is to change that so that, you know, they only buy a license every three years. And that would be the, that's really the only changing we're proposing, so we figure that the licenses will be good for longer. That's all I've got, if you guys have questions?
Alright, thank you, Scott.
Thanks, Scott.
Our city engineer won't be here tonight, so we'll just skip off to city administrator year in review.
So, 2021 year in review, notable items for 21, the personnel policies were rewritten, settled three-year contracts with both union groups, entered into new contracts for healthcare savings plans, implemented time-to-use pilot program, completed an electric rig study, implemented new accounting, billing, payroll software, designed and implemented new document management system, LaserFiche, applied and received PFA loan, received American Recovery Funds, which we will be talking about later on the agenda. We were able to reduce the tax levy upon healthy fund balances and manage staff shortages and modifications related to the COVID pandemic. If you recall, I believe it was early of 20, 20, 19, 20, we held a visioning session, or you guys did. I was actually, I wasn't able to be there, but one of the things we talked about is, what do we wanna see from Melrose? And the areas that I have highlighted here are the areas that are really, we are, we are working on right now. Housing, ever since I've been here, which will be three years in June, has been a priority, so, obviously, we're looking at housing, we're talking about housing, the flexibility of housing, what options are out there, development and acquiring of land. I'm happy to report that we have options on two parcels with potentially a third parcel as well. The craft lot redevelopment still remains a high priority for us, and that's something that's in process. We were successful in receiving the fire remediation extension for the funds that we received through the state legislature, and that will sunset in '23, so it's really incumbent upon us to work with a developer yet this year. We continue to apply for grants whenever they are available. Obviously, the Sauk River project is going on. Infrastructure is continuing to be maintained in a very efficient way, and we continue to maintain and improve all of our infrastructure, whether to utilities, public safety, roads, etc. And we continue to maintain and improve all of our infrastructure, whether to utilities, public safety, roads, et cetera. I think we do a really good job of chamber collaboration. And later on the agenda, we'll be talking about this, but camping at Sock River Park is something that we will continue to expand. Hopefully this year, get that done. We, in the last two years, have increased both our trails and our sidewalks. So you can see there's several things on this plan that have been done. Obviously, there's lots more to do, but I always say, you know, if you're doing development, it's a marathon, it's not a sprint. And so we just have to be patient with the process. But I feel, and you guys should feel very, very proud of how we've headed, what direction we're heading in terms of our development for the city. So COVID-19, you know, last year we talked about this and I remember saying it was the new normal. And I'm just going to say now we're in what's called the new new normal. You know, we went through this whole thing about, you know, vaccines, vaccine mandates, does this apply? Testing quarantine, severity of COVID cases. So, you know, we just got hit with a whole bunch of stuff. And what we've really learned is that flexibility is a key to how we are going to deal with this. I think as staff, we were very well prepared and I think that's what we did, is we just tried to be calm and flexible in terms of the approach that we took in dealing with the public as well as with the employees. As one of the, my favorite things to say during this whole thing is we don't know what we don't know. And that's very true, whether it's this pandemic or something that is coming up. All we can do is what we have with the facts that are before us. And so back to normal, you know, I think, I would like to say we're back to pretty normal right now. So we'll see. I said that a year ago, so I don't know. Hopefully, hopefully I'm not going to be coming to you next year saying the same thing. One thing that I think is of note is, starting in '22, we've signed three new contracts with West Central Sanitation for residential solid waste services, S stage for civil engineering, and Inspectron for our new building inspection. In the legislature, again, in '21, we are successful in extending our fire remediation grant. We are currently on the 2022 LCCMR project list. And we continue to be very active with the Coalition of Greater Minnesota Cities, whose priorities are local government aid, infrastructure, housing, and childcare. In early March, I will be heading down to the legislature where CMGC has scheduled several meetings with legislatures on the priority projects, or on the priority, priorities, I guess. New employees and retirement. So we have three new employees, Cole Jordal with our electric department, Evan Gregory with our sanitary water, wastewater department, and Dave Bondfield with our police department. Roger Stairman, who was a longtime city employee in our water, wastewater department, did retire. So there were several changes, not several, but I guess some very key changes. So MADA's enabling legislation or ordinance was changed to establish a board consisting of the mayor, council member, and five members, and naming the finance directors MADA's treasurer. Also, the other thing that changed was the city administrator is now the executive director for MADA. The nuisance parking ordinance was amended to require current licenses for vehicles stored in residential areas and declare unlicensed vehicles a nuisance. The next thing is a graph that kind of just shows you the five-year comparison as far as building permits go. So you can see that 2017, 18, what are those, residential maintenance? Okay, those are maintenance. So if you look at the first graph on the far left, that's just residential maintenance. So fairly consistent. And then this last, in '21, that, we saw a little bit of drop in that. That's probably equated to the fact that it was very difficult maybe for folks to get materials for certain projects, that type of thing. The second category is new construction. Our highest year for that would have been 2018, obviously last year. And that is a result of not having lots available for sale, as we all know, the challenges that we are facing with housing. So really only had four new construction. We had 11 commercial, which is nice to see. Our commercials remain consistent. And then we had five new construction as far as commercial and industrial. So this is evaluations, which is really interesting. Obviously, 2017 kind of skewed it. That was the year that, that was actually the year Jenny Olls started, yeah. Or got their permit pulled, because, yep, that was a two-year deal. So if you look at '21, it was pretty consistent. We haven't seen a lot of changes relative to building permits. Tessa, I can run, you want to just go ahead and talk about these?
Sure. One thing that we've been working on strategically is looking at our tax rate and our levy and looking at what we need in the current year as well as the future. Where the dotted lines, we're kind of right in the middle. We've been staying fairly flat and are trending downward. The goal is to continue to decrease that slightly in the next five years while we spend down on our fund balances. The net tax capacity, that is the value of properties in Melrose that we're able to spread that tax levy around. And it has been consistently increasing with 2022. Another, but we've been on upward trend over the past seven, eight years. For our general fund, our property taxes make up a little over a third of the revenue sources. Local government aid and state aid is another big portion. One thing that Melrose has to help reduce the levy is we receive electric franchise fees from our electric department. For our general fund expenditures, one larger area in the blue is our transfers out and those are funds that we allocate to our capital projects fund. So we've been really strong at setting aside money for future projects so that we can reduce our need for bonding or obtaining other funding for that.
That was it? So then Craig, do you want to just go for the police department stuff? Can you see it?
Potentially. So our 2021 calls were down about 189, way looks for overall from 2020. We had 53 ordinance violations, which was a big drop from the 95 we had in 2020. So it's good to see the consistency that we've been working towards and the enforcement action has been bringing those situations under control. Domestic assaults dropped as well. We're always glad to see that. We did have some increases in assaults and those were related to mostly juveniles and issues at school. Officer Andrew Ferr left to go to Todd County Sheriff's Office, which can be then replaced with Officer Dave Bondfield in December. So we were a little short-staffed for a little while. We had some surplus at the end of the year and there's some state mandates and federal mandates coming down. So we did purchase four portable radios. We are waiting on some pieces for that. But otherwise, the radios themselves are in. It's just a matter of getting everything that connects to it to make it a workable machine. So hopefully, more will can shake some of that stuff loose sooner rather than later. But everything we have is working, so we can carry on. We're a new squad car. Got that in before the end of the year, just so we could get ahead of the delays that are currently out there, which will be another hybrid version of an SUV. So we're hoping July, but expecting probably closer to October before that actually rolls in. And then we got to put it all together, so we'll see when that all happens.
Patty, do you want to? Oh, yeah, okay. So for rental licenses, our rental licenses renew every three years on a three-year rotation. We have eight multi-family dwellings that renewed in 2021, and 20 single-family homes. Tome donations for 2021 were $33,143. Tobacco licenses stay consistent. We have seven renewals each year. And then liquor licenses, one wine license, five on sale, six Sunday on sale, three off sale, and two 2.2 off sale. And those have been pretty much consistent. Gary?
August 28th, I think you all know, we had this storm come through, so we had quite a bit of time spent on cleaning up. We've got a new plow truck. We just received it about three weeks ago. We worked with the electrical department, moved the part. We installed some permanent power boxes for River Fest so far, myself, Pavillion. Okay, installed a new AED in the Sock River Park and that was donated. Carro 13 RDB project, that took quite a bit of, of time to kind of get things planned out for that. So that's moving right along. Hillcrest River Heights Street project, that was taken care of. Took a little longer than what we wanted it to, but it turned out to be a pretty good project. We also fixed the storm store back in July on Fifth Avenue. The picture there is a brush pile that we're working on and getting rid of it at the nursery park from the summer. That's our new plow truck. The AED in the Sock River Park. That's the construction project in RDB. And some more with the river channel that's partially aligned. They have worked that done. That's aerial, film pictures of the park. And then a picture of actually Carro 13 looking from Main Street. These are pictures of the project at Hillcrest in River Heights before the project. That's the water problem that we've been dealing with for years. Hopefully, that storm pipe is going to correct it somewhat. There is a pipe that we put in.
Thanks, Gary. So if we're looking ahead to 2022, in addition to all the big infrastructure projects, housing and everything else that we've talked about, we are so, are going to be looking at security and climate controls. By security, I mean key fobs. We've talked about that for a couple of years too. But again, that's been slowed down, getting contractors to bid on it, that type of thing. And then climate controls at the city center building. Again, housing, Sock River Park, and one of our biggest challenges, and we're not alone, is going to be hiring for '22. That is a big concern. On the agenda later, you're going to, you're going to approve some hiring and we hope we can get all those positions. So that's kind of where we're at for '22. The last thing, I guess, I want to say as the administrator, obviously it's been a privilege being able to work for the PUC and for the council and for all the other boards. But I wouldn't be able to do my job without all the other organizations. You're going to hear from the fire and the ambulance department a little bit. At 7 o'clock, they're going to present to the townships. So I want to recognize that they do, as volunteer organizations, do a phenomenal job. And then I just really want to recognize and thank all of the departments that work for the city and the utilities and what a good job they do. I think we have, you know, the best employees, the city of Melrose does, and I am very appreciative for that. So that's all I have on the update, Mr. Mayor.
Alright. Is there any questions? Run to action items. Action item A is a proclamation declaring February 23rd, 2022, School Bus Driver Appreciation Day. I know some of the school bus drivers in town and, and I know other school districts with different school buses and so many of them have so much trouble finding bus drivers. And especially with the whole COVID thing, there's so many dynamics involved with everything they do. And you look in the cities, all you see is school buses on the side of roads with the signs that says "Drivers Wanted." So I just wanted to bring attention to our local school bus drivers in the area and just thank them for all their hard work, getting up early in the morning, you know, some working late at nights, bringing kids to sports. And they seem like kids didn't get home till almost 11 o'clock the other night. So it's definitely a career of hard work. So I decided to put together a little proclamation just to thank the, the four school bus businesses in the area for all their help to get our children to school. And the proclamation reads like this. Whereas Minnesota school bus drivers are critically essential workers who serve an important role in our school system and have positive influence on students' education experiences. Whereas the drivers safely transport more than 775,000 students to and from school each day throughout the state. And whereas drivers remain dedicated to their critical role of serving students and communities during another school year impacted by challenges brought by the COVID-19 pandemic. And whereas nearly every school district in the state faces school bus driver shortages and is seeking professionals who are willing to drive and to serve in these fulfilling, flexible jobs. And whereas Minnesota, Minnesota school bus drivers play a critical role in our school systems and have positive influence on students' education experience. And whereas the city of Melrose appreciates school bus drivers and recognizes the invaluable contributions they make to public education and student safety. Today, we recognize these worthy, worthy professionals. Now therefore, I, Joe Finken, Mayor, City of Melrose, do proclaim Wednesday, February 23rd, 2022, School Bus Drivers Appreciation Day. So I just want to thank them for all their hard work and what they do for our school district and our community. We're on to 6B, council chambers petitions, petitions.
So the city center is 32 years old and there are three meeting rooms that were, obviously when the city center was built, there were three meeting rooms. Meeting room A is where the council meets. That has largely stayed open during COVID, so A and B are essentially combined. But there is a partition between A and B that, well, could be closed. It can't now. But, and then there's a partition between B and C. So we typically do rent out meeting rooms B and C. We've always, over the last few years, have had some pretty big issues with the partitions. They're off the tracks. They're not fixable, that type of thing. And so we did obtain quotes. One is for a glass partition like this, as an example. I think it's behind me here on the TV. And then the other one, that's a little, that's a frosted glass. I didn't bring the sample list, I apologize. But the other quote is simply for a vinyl, you know, very similar to what we have now, to replace the partition. If you'll notice, we aren't in there this evening, but if you've been in the council chambers, there's almost, there's a movie theater like, or what you see at the airport, the, the, I don't know if you call it a rope or what you would call it, but up between A and B because we can no longer close that partition. It's, it's broke. And C is in pretty rough shape as well. So we did obtain three quotes to get these fixed. And the lowest quote was 40, just over $48,000. That was from Rusko, I believe. Let me just double check that.
Midwest Construction.
I'm sorry, it was Midwest, yep, it was Midwest Construction. The other two quotes, one was from Acoustics and one was from Sfold. So if you had looked at the pictures in your packet, and again, I apologize, I don't have the board with me. But Midwest Construction can replace both of those petitions, partitions, remove the old ones, repaint, do everything for just a little bit over $48,000. This was brought to the PUC on Monday and they will be paying cost sharing 50% of that. And so I, as an administrator, am asking you as a council to approve the, approve getting new partitions. It's honestly, I don't like spending money on stuff like this, but you know, if the old ones lasted 32 years, the idea is if these are taken care of and, and they're done correctly and we make sure that anyone who's using the meeting space doesn't try to yank them closed, because there is a certain key that you have to have to do that. I can, I can, you know, I fully expect that these will last us for 30 years. So I would say the glass ones are a lot more expensive. The PUC just recommended getting the, what I call the vinyl. It's just a separation. So that's a little bit of $48,000 and I would recommend that the council approve that and pay for half of it at this time.
Before we go to that, I forgot that we needed a motion to approve the proclamation. Okay, a motion to approve.
Sub move.
Second.
Compared to I.
Alright.
Both motion carried. Okay, under discussion with the partitions.
Are these acoustically sound blocking petitions? I didn't see that.
STC 50 sound rating, whatever that is.
Yeah, yeah.
They do block some of that, yeah.
Because I know the ones we have now are actually fairly decent in their fabric and.
Yeah, they are very nice, yeah.
That would be nice to know what kind of difference it would be.
I think when we, because he, the guy who came in is the one who put in the original partition. And I think he did say that these, I mean, there was lower ratings. I think this is a pretty, I can, I can go back and check. But I think it's comparable to what we've currently got in there, so it's no close, but I can, I can ask that question.
I hate to go down because obviously, the point of, point of petitions is to separate the spaces so you can have separate meetings and.
Right.
Deadness of all that stuff, so. I don't like the idea of glass. I don't like the idea of glass partitions.
Well, I think you're competing in purpose there.
Yeah.
Everybody can see through the.
Do we have money in the budget this year? City maintenance or, sorry. Do you know if we have money in the, for city hall maintenance or, I know we contribute to it every year.
We would have it out of the maintenance set aside, I'm not counting that, but it would be made up in future years.
And PUC is paying for half of it.
So it'd be twenty-four thousand.
Twenty-five, give or take. Just want to make sure we're thinking about that because if we had another project that we're thinking about doing next year, then, you know, maybe doing all these projects if we don't, we're not budgeting for them, so.
Yeah. All right, can I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, on favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. All right, part-time streets, parks, water, wastewater maintenance worker. This is more or less replacing what we did have. Plus, we had a retirement of the one. So we've been doing it historically like we have in the past. So any questions?
Make a motion to approve that part-time summer out for streets and parks.
All right, take a second.
Second.
On favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. And this one here is for streets and park maintenance worker Bob Beckerman has submitted his letter of resignation and is finally going to be retiring, huh? Long deserved retirement for a great man. So can I get a motion to approve for backfilling the position?
So moved. Second.
On favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion's carried.
Just to clarify, that's three-quarter time, right?
Yeah. Okay, ARPA funds.
So as you may recall, we just need just under two hundred thousand dollars in two thousand twenty-one for the American Rescue Plan funds. There were specific ways that we could spend that money, so we were just kind of holding on, watching what was coming. The Department of Treasury just released a final rule and they really increased the flexibility of that. One option that has always been there was for lost revenues, which Melrose didn't really suffer from. However, now they've added a standard allowance of up to ten million dollars to all of our funds. We can just claim that standard allowance as lost revenue, which would be the easier way to do that. So we will also be receiving another just under two hundred thousand in two thousand twenty-two. So these funds have to be obligated by the end of two thousand twenty-four and spent by the end of twenty-six. So our first required report to the Department of Treasury is due at the end of April. So we are looking for the council to declare these funds as replacing lost public sector revenue. That would be the cleanest way to go with them. It just cannot be used to reduce our levy or to pay down debt, but that opens it up for use as the council sees it.
So for expanding roads and infrastructure is a good way to use it also, correct?
Correct.
All right, can I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, on favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
I could just mention something about that.
Go for it.
I don't really like this whole shoveling money everywhere by the federal government. Just wanted, just wanted to say that.
That's fair. I get it. Okay, RDB tree removal. Who wants to play that?
I will. So obviously we have the big RDB project. And as part of the project, there is area where they had to remove the trees on the bank. You can see kind of from this aerial photo that there's, the, the construction limits. It questions whether or not, you know, some of those trees are in people's yards, that type of thing. So the simplest way, there, you know, there was, I, I believe there was a misstep here. We should have probably gone one-on-one and talked to those individuals and let them know that the, the trees were going to be getting removed. That did not take place. But I talked to the county and we kind of came up with that calculation for each individual lot there. They range in anywhere from a hundred and fifty dollars to three hundred. So the total would be fifteen hundred dollars would, is what it would cost to, you know, write folks checks. It, number one, it promotes the goodwill and then number two, it gives us, if they, hopefully then they're going to say, yep, you can, if you have to grade or there's limits that go over the construction area and it slightly comes into my yard, we're going to let you go ahead and do that. The other option that we would have is, so that's the quickest and most cost-effective option. The other would be we'd actually have to physically formally survey every single one of those lots. That would be very expensive. And then instead of calculating the trees on a per acre basis, which is by the way, the custom or the practice of the county, that's how they do it, it's like ten thousand dollars an acre. Then you would have to kind of figure out a method or formula for the trees. And the problem is, you know, some of these are very large trees and, you know, maybe the trunk was in the construction limit area, but maybe part of the branch is around somebody's yard, you know? It's just, it's a, it's a, it's one of those things that we're just better off, you know, looking at a per acre basis and then paying it that way. So the project doesn't get slowed down. And the idea is that when we go out and we talk to these folks, we're going to also get them to sign a right-of-way, right-of-entry permit so that when they finish doing the final grading, folks are going to let us on to their property. So we did have, there was shore land easements for all of these properties, but those had expired in two thousand fourteen. So, yeah, there was just, you know, in a project this big, it just, it happens, I think, sometimes. And I think that the folks that are over there are going to be pretty reasonable about it. So I would recommend that the city authorize payments to the individuals affected by the tree removal on a per, per acre basis with the overall cost not to exceed fifteen hundred. So again, as I stated, some folks would get a hundred and twenty, some would get three hundred. It's just a calculation based on that, that their potential part of acres that are affected, if that makes sense. So if you look at that yellow line up on the screen, that kind of shows you where those property limits are.
Questions?
I assume this was an oversight by somebody, engineer or something along the way. Because anytime there's a construction project, county, state, property lines are determined. And.
Yeah, I think, you know, the construction limits were what they were. So they, they, they were within the right-of-way. But the problem is, is again, if you remove these trees, I think it was more a communication thing. You know, we don't, it's hard to say if they were on their property, you know? Or if they just were on in the right-of-way. That's what's tough. And some of them are older trees or they're scrub and they, you know, there's no, it's kind of merged altogether there because when they go to remove the slope, it wasn't just a simple, here, I'm just going to take this tree out and this tree out. It's like they weren't individually tagged. It was an area that they went in and they just, you know, took the trees out. So, yeah, you know, I think, I think there probably could have definitely been a better job on the front end.
Yeah, I don't know how to rectify this situation. I suppose we could try and patch this up now and address it with parties involved at a later date. If that makes sense. Not these parties that were, not the trees, but. If that makes, you know what I mean?
Sure, I understand.
I imagine we have to compensate the property owners.
Somebody has to.
For. Yeah, for something. And I'm like, you, I think what you're alluding to is that we maybe speak with the project general manager and say, hey.
Yeah, what happened?
Yeah.
We can smooth, try and smooth over the situation now, but.
I think that's the best route to go is to compensate these folks, especially, it's not large monetary amounts. There could have been some discussion prior to, there wasn't. It's a bad deal now, so it's, try to get back in their good graces.
Yeah.
Correct.
All right.
Can I get a motion to approve this, please?
So.
Second.
On favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion's carried. Old business, just cleaning up the West Central sanitation contract, who would like to talk?
I would like to talk about that if you could, please. So basically, you know, things have been going pretty good with the transition. My understanding is Waste Management still has some containers out there. So hopefully that where those containers are, we individuals will give them a call and they'll get them out of there. So, you know, it's been a pretty good transition. We did have about a dozen residents though that told West Central, well, no, I don't need garbage service because I'll just take it to the farm or whatever. And I actually spoke individually to those folks and explained why they had to have the service. And, you know, with the exception of one, it actually went very well. So that is good and I think they understand that. If you recall, when we submitted, when I put together the RFP, I did have a dry-by fee in there. And then when we went ahead and negotiated the contract, we didn't include that. I would like you to consider revisiting that. And the reason I say that is because when we encounter vacant homes, just like if we have sewer and water to a home, we have a minimum fee that we charge for sewer and water. So I think that there should also be a minimum fee for the, a dry-by fee for vacant homes. Just so you guys know, there was a dry-by fee. It was nine dollars when we had a contact with Becker's and what was Waste Management took over. It's just that it was included or rolled into the overall cost. So we didn't see that necessarily, but there's always been a dry-by fee. So West Central is proposing four dollars a month for that. And again, it only applies to vacant homes. West Central's been able to work things out with other folks if there's extenuating circumstances. Like say somebody's in a nursing home or whatever. They've been really good about working with folks on that end of it. But this is, you know, homes that potentially are in foreclosure or whatever. They're trying to get them cleaned up or, you know, who knows? But just kind of to keep your spots. So I would recommend that the council, we put that caveat back in the contract for a four dollar a month dry-by fee.
Is it vacant homes or vacant lots as well? Like an empty lot gets a fee?
I don't think so. I think it really is just physical structures.
Well, if they're going down in the alley and they're picking up four trash on one side and three trash on the other side and there's one that's kind of in the middle of the block that nobody's living there at the time, they gotta go down that alley.
Yeah.
And make seven collections rather than eight. I, I just don't know where billing that empty property, whether it's somebody that's got a house for sale or whatever the reason is, why they gotta get four bucks to drive by that one? If anything, it's saving them an extra minute or two of not having to stop and pick up those cans. I just, you know, I, I could see if there was, they had to go down an alley and, and they were only picking up one can and all the rest of the houses on that alley were, were vacant, you know, there were no cans. But if you're going down an average alley, I'm guessing you're looking at about four on each side roughly. And if one of them, you know, nobody's living there, there are no cans. I, I don't know, I just, I don't understand why they feel they need to get four dollars to drive by that one when they're going to drive by it anyway.
I, I don't think you should be obligated to pay for service that you don't want. That's, that's the other part of it.
Yeah, I guess.
You're still, you're obligated to pay for something you don't get.
Right, well, I mean, you're not referring to a solid waste collection as a whole though.
No, no, right.
Okay.
Just this fee is like, well, now, do, does the gas company get to charge everybody a, a fee that doesn't use gas for heat?
And the only other thing with that, if Waste Management had it rolled into their number, then that kind of skews the quote because then they were higher, by naturally higher. And now we're adding a fee that was separated out, so.
And they initially agreed to this, did they not?
Yeah, we didn't think we were going to, we just ran into so many situations with the foreclosed homes. So what happens is though, these folks still have containers. So the containers were dropped off. Their homes that are in foreclosures are for sale. And so the real estate people are saying, no, leave the containers there. You know, we might have to go in there and clean up, we might have to do this or that. It's almost like a placeholder for whoever the new folks are that are moving in there. If that makes sense.
Well, then I guess is the, is the Realty Office or whoever the Realtor is that's trying to sell this property, are they getting the bill in?
Yeah, they would be if it's in foreclosure. So for example, the one that we encountered.
If you have containers, you get charged the regular rate for whatever containers you have.
Well, and that was the argument by them, they're saying, hey, this is in foreclosure. Yeah.
I'd say they should just not have containers at that property.
Right.
And then not pick up the fore.
I mean, if they went down the alleys and every house they dropped three containers.
I know those three containers that they dropped by the other driveway because this house next house has two driveways. So there's been three containers sitting on the snowbank there for two weeks now. Nobody's touched them, so. And they haven't picked them up yet either, so I don't know. You know, they can come pick them up anytime they want, but so is, is all the bonus on the property owners or is a little bit on West Central Sanitation say, okay, where do we drop containers off that they didn't want them?
I think that they're not going to know that because there was a postcard that went out that said, you know, if you're going to have, you know, what, what size, et cetera, et cetera. So I think it's incumbent upon the property owners to let West Central know that or if, you know, if West Central put it in the wrong location, which has happened and they've tried to rectify a majority of those situations. This is just, you know, again, this was, there's containers, they're actually using the containers because they're cleaning out the house. But yet they're saying, well, yeah, by rights, I guess I own it, but, um, you know, it's in foreclosure or whatever. I, that's, it gets a little tricky.
I'd say that scenario should be paying a full garbage rate, not a four dollar drive-by.
Because otherwise I'll pay the four dollar drive-by and I want the cans by my house.
Yeah.
Seems simpler to either you have cans and have a bill or you don't have cans and you don't have a bill.
You know, we do have some extenuating circumstances. Like what if somebody's in a nursing home for a short period of time? Obviously they're not getting, you know, they're not getting garbage right now. But if they're only in there for a short period of time and they, the intent is for them to come back to their home, you know, I don't know, does it pay for them to get their containers taken away? Or do they just leave them?
And I understand that and in the dry-by fee, are they stopping and physically trying to empty the empty cans?
If the cans are out front, I'm guessing they are because they're not going to know if they're empty or not.
I would say you gotta take some of them, good and bad, because I know there's elderly people that live in their home and it might take them three months to fill the can enough to dump it too and they're still paying. You know, so you gotta have, you have some of both.
Yeah, yeah.
I, I mean, I understand their point, but I just, I feel like it'd be simpler to be, you have cans, you have service, you don't have cans, you don't, that's just my opinion and don't know the business in it.
Yeah, it's just hard, like when somebody calls them, they're like, you know, they got a broken hip or whatever and they're in the nursing home and it's like, oh, but don't take my cans away because I really, my intent is to come back into the home. You know, that's, that's where it gets a little bit harder, but.
I don't know, they're here every week, so they can carry, they carry those cans right on their truck. If somebody is new, that's, you know, so I mean, it's not like if they do come pick them up.
No, but the homeowner's the one that's saying, don't take them away.
Right.
Okay, I, I get where you're going with this. I'll, I'll come back to West Central for that. And then the only other thing was, they talked about the CPI and we just want to make sure that's very clear. We, in the RFP that West Central, that West Central had submitted, they were going by actual CPI increases annually. And if you recall, the council did want to limit that to four percent. While they recognized the value of the balanced approach to the annual adjustment each year so the residents would not experience a large adjustment in any one year, West Central did agree to a cap of four percent increases with any actual CPI adjustments greater than four percent to be carried over to the next annual adjustment. They said how. They said, however, they did not, they don't want to agree to the, um, decrease. So, for example, if you had, um, in year one, a six percent CPI, they would only raise the rate four percent in year one and then carry additional two percent forward and the, until they could be used under the four percent max, if that makes sense. So, you know, the bottom line is, it's a four percent per year, is how you have to look at it. And are you guys okay with that? That's what the other committee was proposing.
I, I think that's what we were anticipating, we, we didn't really expect, uh, you know, them to come and say, well, it's only two percent this year, so we're going to reduce the rates, fuel costs and everything else like that, I, I think we all anticipated four percent. But, on the off chance they do only have a, a two percent? Maybe that's kind of a way they absorb their four dollar a month drive-by fee.
So, I just wanted to clarify that, do you have any more questions, there's no action required? Um, yep, no, we're into the next topic, Mr. Mayor.
Funding, uh, the South River Park campground.
So, again, if you look at the screen, there is a plan that shows a campground layout. The park board has met over the last two months, planning this campground. If you'll recall, when we redid the, the alignment of the river, we had to take out twelve campsites. Those were the campsites that had the water and electric on them. The park board has met and said, you know, if we're going to put campsites back in and knowing, um, really the demand that exists for our campsites, um, let's, let's think about doing something, you know, bigger and better. And so, the layout that you see in front of you would be for nineteen or twenty, I can't remember, twenty, twenty? Yep, twenty sites plus the four that are along the ballfield that are existing today. These would be thirty by fifty sites, so they're very nice sites, and they would be set back thirty feet from the river, because we have to maintain that buffer per our requirements for the permitting that we received. There would be a road, um, that goes all the way around these sites, each site would have a, you know, a fire pit, and then they would have, each site would have a pedestal for electric and water. Now, the question is, okay, that sounds great, um, if you see the bow ties, that's really our ability to shut the water off at any given location. Because this is all in a floodway, floodway, while campsites are allowed in floodways, we do have to have the ability to, you know, shut the electric and the, and the, um, water off, should, should this ever flood. In addition to the campsites, if you notice where the, um, I don't know if you can see that on the screen behind me, if, you can see my arrow or not, but there is a little bathroom that exists today. That bathroom is very small, it's only a hundred and ninety-six square feet and it's in really, really tough shape. So, because we are creating a new campground, we are required under a Sterns County license to actually have showers as part of the campground. But what's working against us is, because this is all floodway, we don't know whether or not we're going to be permitted for a shower bathroom, um, in this area. We have some calculations that are being run right now, and as long as we do not affect the water level, if there were a flood and we can maintain what we have from an elevation standpoint, we should be able to put a bathroom and shower exactly where the existing one is. However, we will nee, need to maintain some portion of the old one, so that it would be considered an expansion. We tear the whole thing down, then we have to go through a whole other process. So, it is recommended that there be a wall that, um, stays as part of the bathroom and shower facility. Again, we don't know for sure whether or not we're going to be able to get this put in, um, we're still trying to determine that. The park board is meeting on March ninth to go over, um, the rest of the plans. We are very busily trying to get funding for this project. One of the things that is included in your packet, though, is a quote for the electric, and the reason that's here is because, um, we went over this at the park board meeting last night. In order for the pedestals and everything to be ordered, we have to do that now, and that means we're getting it till the end of September. We do not know what portion of this the Public Utilities Commission is going to pay for. That is actually going to be on their agenda in March. But what I would recommend is that, um, based on the quote, it's just a little bit under thirty-five thousand, that we do go ahead and get these pedestals and the electric necessary to order, so that Roger can order it. Otherwise, we're just pushing the campground, like all the stuff, out further, and if we want to be ready for the twenty-one, twenty-three season, we really have to do that. Now, having said that, I do understand, you know, we're asking the council right now to pay this portion. Um, however, please understand that it will be a cost share with the PUC. Um, we don't know to what degree, we also know that we're saving a lot of money, because our folks are trying to do a lot of the work. We also know there's a lot of other costs involved in this project, and just so you know, we are looking at both LCCMR funds as well as outdoor recreation grant funds to pay for the, this project. Once the park board meets, sorry, I'm sorry.
I, just a point of clarification, can, can you, can we proceed with twenty campsites? If we don't know for sure if we can update the bathroom?
Well, we'll be able to update the bathroom.
But I mean, as far as with the showers?
What we have to do is if we could not put it in this location, we would have to put it up next to the main pavilion, so...
Okay, I see, so that there will be...
A place in the park for it.
It just might not be in the existing footprint.
Correct, it would end up having then to go up by the, um, the big, you know, pavilion.
Okay. So, either way, either way, the campsites can go in.
Yes.
Okay.
Um...
Do we have any more, any idea what, like, the total project cost of this is?
Um, if I were to guess today, um, and I'll bring that back next month, too, but, um, there's also two fish benches that are part of this and a canoe and kayak launch, um, there's educational signage, there's a whole bunch of stuff. Um, we applied for two hundred and seventy-five thousand through LCCMR, two hundred and eighty-five thousand. Seventy-five or eight, I can't remember, but that's probably a little late. I would say the overall project's going to be about three hundred thousand.
The hard part of going into this, number one is we literally got this information to the council thirty seconds before the meeting started.
Yeah, because it...
We haven't been exposed to any of this stuff.
Yeah.
Can't think of questions to ask.
Right.
This is, this is thirty-four thousand dollars for plowing electric into something we have no idea if we're going to be able, truly be able to do, right? But the layout doesn't, I mean, this is within, uh, it was in the floodplain, don't we have to get some type of approval for it?
The only, the, the campsites are permitted, so the flood, from a flood waste...
From the, from the DNR, whatever the...
The, the camps, yeah. The campsites are fine, because they allow all the water, you know, there's nothing in them that prevents water, and as long as we have an electric shut-off and a water shut-off and we have a...
Subject, plowed into these, or they'll just have a dump site?
Just the dump site. So, as long as we have a notification system for, in place for the campers, like, you know, Craig's Department we would work with, and, you know, if we know a storm's coming in, just like they do now, as long as we have it all documented, there's no issue with the campsites themselves. It is just a matter of where that bathroom shower is going to be located, that is probably the issue. Now, again, you know, the park board has been working on this for the last couple of months, they are meeting again on March ninth, so if you wanted to wait, um, I, we certainly can have it go back to the park board and really kind of sharpen the pencil as far as all the different costs and numbers, and then we could come back to you. But just keep in mind, the, the... Unfortunately, I wish I could say that the prices would go down, but if Roger has to re-quote this, it could be up another, you know, buck fifty, which doesn't seem like a lot. But we went from January fifth, or what did he say, it was a dollar?
Four eighty for a two and a half inch pipe, uh, five ninety-five today, three weeks.
So, in six weeks, that's how much it's gone up, so that's why there's kind of a sense of urgency, just to get this part of it ordered.
Because you're ordering it, it's not, you're not putting it in place or anything, so you would, you'd have time to go through, uh, more detailed plans after.
I mean, we're all, he just wants to get the order in, because it, it'll be Septem, possibly September, before you can get it sold. Even if you put the order in and all of a sudden something, you know, the shower area was going to be half a million, which hopefully it's not, but, I mean, I'm sure a person can still kind of back out, because this stuff's not coming, it's not sitting there being made, but...
But also, you guys have money, the parks are ready for it.
We do.
The park, yes, they, I mean, there's, there is money, obviously.
Five thousand or something has to go back to council.
Well, it wouldn't be the end of the world if you ended up sitting on a whole bunch of two-inch conduit. It would get used eventually somewhere.
The biggest thing would be is the pedestals and stuff like that, but, I mean, it'd be nice to replace the campsites at least that we have, and that's why we went a little bit bigger. That's the only thing that really brings the park in money. And it brings actually very good money back to the park, so, and it's been getting used a lot in the last four or five years, way more than...
Do we have a, speaking of that, um, you know, it'd be nice to do this business, like as a, like a business would do it, you know, do a return on investment, see if it's going to pay for itself over a number of years. You know, this is a public, public park that our residents are supposed to be able to use, but a large part of it now we're turning into something for people to come in from outside of community, if that makes sense. So, if, if, in my opinion, if we're going to, if we're going to create, you know, a campground out of the soccer park, we should look at what kind of return on investment there is there.
Well, um, with just the fees that you're going to pay, you're never going to get that return, I mean, it would be a forty-year longer return. I think there's a couple of different ways to look at it, yes, there's, we're not taking up the portions of the park that are used by the public right now. This is, um, this is simply, with the exception of a little bit of a soccer field, um, this is kind of, you know... Camping is one of the things that draws people to our community, um, Lake Wobegon Trail gets used all the time. We had thirty-eight different, we had visitors from thirty-eight states, four countries last year, and we had four hundred and some visitors, so it is a big deal for our city. But yes, I'm certainly happy to bring it back, you guys just give me the direction, what you would like.
Um, I, I'm ready to vote on it, to at least move it. So, is anybody else?
I get, when I look at the jump in material costs, I would just as soon go ahead and at least...
Well, you could look at that two ways, and eventually, the supply chain's going to loosen up and projects are going to slow down and the prices are going to come down.
Yeah, that, and we're looking at a timeline, though, if, if, if it takes a period of time to get those material, I'm sure that, uh, Roger and, and company want to try to get this in before it gets too frozen up next fall.
But, well, it could happen next year, too, I mean, the project, it doesn't have to happen this year.
Well, they want to kind of do it when everything's disturbed.
Right, because it makes a lot more sense, the mobilizations there.
Because it's all going to be disturbed and then everything can get flattened all to be done. It's cost-effective, why is that's going to save money?
I would say we could get the material coming and then redo that plan, like I think...
Yeah, I mean, until we know the cost, I mean, we don't know what half, some of that stuff is, but if Roger can get this stuff ordered, at least...
I'll make a motion to order.
Okay, can I get a second? Okay, on my favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
No.
Motion carried. Information items, schools and conferences, public utility commission, commission meeting minutes, there's nothing else, can I get a motion to adjourn?
Second.
On my favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion carried.